...person and online. Commissioners, planning department staff, and members of the public are attending in the Wheat Ridge City Hall or by way of the Zoom platform. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make comments may participate virtually by joining through Zoom either on a device or by calling in. A Zoom meeting link and dial-in information can be found on the WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. In addition to being online via Zoom, we are also broadcasting this meeting on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When it is time for public comment, and there are several public comment periods tonight, those who wish to comment on our Zoom connection use the Raise Your Hand button. If you are dialing in, press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to unmute your phone. If you plan to speak online tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. I would now like to call to order the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for June 13th, 2024. May I please get a roll call of members?
Jonathan Shelkey.
Here.
Krista Hollup.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Daniel Gravy.
Here.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Michael Moore.
Here.
The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge. The next item is approving the order of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the order of the agenda?
Yes, so the May 2nd minutes have also been added to be approved.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to amend the agenda as described?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, 8 to 0.
Next, we will vote to approve the amendments from the May 2nd meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? No, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, 7 to 1, sorry, 7 to 0 with one abstaining.
And now we'll vote to approve the minutes from our May 16th meeting. May I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, 7 to 0 with one abstaining.
We will now open the general interest public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. If you plan to speak on an item that is on tonight's agenda, please wait until we get to those items. Those who wish to comment on our Zoom connection use the Raise Your Hand button. All speakers are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Speakers may not donate their time. And I have four people who have, no, wait, this is for the agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on an item that's not on the agenda?
No one has signed up.
All right.
There are two people online. If you wish to speak about something not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Nobody currently.
All right, thank you. I will close the public forum. All right, tonight we have an item on our agenda, and I would like Commissioner Moore to introduce that into the record.
Case number WZ-24-06, an application filed by Confluence Development LLC for an approval of a zone change from industrial employment, i.e., to mixed-use commercial TOD on property located at 11910 West 52nd Avenue in order to develop the site with residential and/or commercial uses.
Thank you. May I have, excuse me, pardon me. May we please have the staff report?
Okay, good evening. My name is Alina LeWes, Florida, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ-2406, which is a request for approval of a zone change from industrial employment to mixed-use commercial TOD at 11910 West 52nd Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located on the north side of West 52nd Avenue between Ward Road and Taft Court. The lot measures about 100,000 square feet, or a little over 2 acres in size, and the property is currently unimproved and is being used as a boat and RV storage facility. The site is within the TOD area located within a half mile of Ward Station. The property is currently zoned industrial employment. Properties to the west and south are also zoned i.e. and mixed-use neighborhood to the east. The properties located immediately across West 52nd Avenue to the north are within the bounds of unincorporated Jefferson County. The uses in the area are diverse and include low, mid, and high-density residential, commercial, and light industrial. The west side of the TOD area was home to the former Jelly Rancher Candy Factory, and the entire area has historically been industrial. But with the completion of RTD's G Line and Ward Station and adoption of policies and goals for the TOD area, we have seen a shift in character, and several residential redevelopment projects have been completed over the last decade. This is a view of the subject property looking south from West 52nd Avenue. This is a view of the subject property looking west from West 52nd Avenue and Taft Court. And this is a view of the established neighborhood looking north from West 52nd Avenue and Taft The applicant is requesting the zone change to mixed-use commercial TOD in order to redevelop the site for a residential or mixed-use development. Under the current i.e. zoning, the property could remain as-is and underutilized, or even develop into a higher-intensity industrial use. A zone change to MUC TOD would change permitted uses to residential and commercial and enable a development which would align with the city's adopted plans, policies, and goals for the TOD area and would work towards creating a more uniform zoning. This table compares the existing i.e. and MUC TOD development standards. The MUC TOD Zone District is intended for areas generally within one-half mile of light rail stations. The city created the MUC TOD development standards with regard for the surrounding areas, including residential transitions. MUC TOD zoning is designated specifically for the area between Ridge Road, Ward Road, 52nd Avenue, and Tabor Street. Many sites within the TOD area have already been rezoned to mixed use, and several residential projects have been completed over the last decade. The permitted uses in MUC TOD would allow the applicant more flexibility to redevelop the property and would require compliance with the strict development standards of the mixed-use Zone District. I would like to note that the maximum height in MUC is taller than the current i.e. zoning in part because this property is located in an area that voters exempted in 2008 from this charter's height and density limitations. And that means a single-use building can be up to six stories or 90 feet, and a building that is vertically mixed-use can be up to eight stories or 118 feet. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April 3rd, 2024, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Nineteen people attended the meeting, and the notes from the meeting were included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to occupants and property owners within a 1,000-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks were reviewed by Planning Commission ahead of this hearing. Staff received eight comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge Speaks prior to this hearing. Staff reviews zone change requests based on several criteria and consistency with adopted plans and policies. Staff finds that the zone change request addresses goals and objectives of several adopted plans and policies, including the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, the COMP Plan, and the Northwest Subarea Plan. The Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy outlines goals for the city to become a community of choice and to be competitive with adjacent jurisdictions by upgrading housing stock, increasing variety of housing stock available, developing employment areas, and targeting underutilized commercial properties for redevelopment. Within the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, this property is designated as Employment TOD Mixed Use, which aligns with the COMP Plan's designation of mixed-use employment. Goals of both include a mix of uses around the commuter rail station, including commercial, retail, and multi-unit housing, a pedestrian-friendly setting, and high-quality urban design and architecture. The Northwest Subarea Plan also designates this property as Mixed Use TOD with similar goals and objectives as the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan and the COMP Plan. The distinction between the pink mixed-use TOD area north of the tracks versus the red employment TOD south of the tracks is important. In recognition of existing land uses, the Northwest Subarea Plan considers that the Wheat Ridge Ward Station to be a job-focused transit station, and the current i.e. zoning in the general area helps reflect that vision. The city has been protective of industrially-zoned land south of the tracks between the I-70 Frendage Road and Railroad tracks in order to retain the potential for an employment base and additional job creation. Residential development in this particular proposal can be supported north of the tracks, but would not be supported in a location further south. Sorry, I moved too quick. The proposed zone change would enable all of the stated goals for this site to be achieved and would result in a high-quality development held to strict standards within the mixed-use Zone District. While staff does not disregard the impacts of new development on existing areas, redevelopment promotes positive outcomes such as opportunities for neighborhood retail and restaurants that can benefit the area. New development also results in new sidewalks, more lively streetscapes, and improved infrastructure. Much of this relies on the presence of a strong resident base to achieve and maintain and would not be attainable under the current industrial zoning. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns in this area, the MUC TOD Zone District is most appropriate for the development of the site and meeting the city's goals for the TOD area, specifically goals for increased and diverse housing options, creating a mix of uses, and creating a resilient and robust transit center. Staff finds a zone change to MUC TOD is supported by the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan, the COMP Plan, and the Northwest Subarea Plan, and the request meets a majority of the zone change criteria. That concludes my presentation, and I had one sidebar. I did get a couple of questions from the commission prior to the hearing, so I wanted to address those on the record. The first question was regarding Section 26-1112-B in the Mixed Use Code, which is a requirement for development sites over five acres and those that are subject to new construction. It requires them to have at least 50% of the proposed square footage of the ground floor contain non-residential uses, so it's pretty much a requirement for mixed use. And I just wanted to clarify that this requirement is not applicable to this particular site. The site that we're talking about tonight is just over 2 acres, so it doesn't meet that five-acre requirement. And also, that provision specifically calls out the proposed Zone District, mixed-use commercial TOD is actually precluded from that requirement. So that was the first question. And then the second question was asking if the Mixed Use Code requires usable open space to be open to the public, and the answer is no. The usable open space that we require on each site has to be open to the site's tenants and residents, but our code does not require them to be open to the general public. Yeah, that's what I have.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
The applicant does not, but they are open for Q and A.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will now open. The public hearing will take comment on case number WZ-2406. Before we begin, I would like to again welcome you to speak. It is important that any public hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our hope is that we create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. I ask that you respect the statements made by city staff, the applicant, and my fellow commissioners. After the presentation, wait, excuse me. Please do not clap, yell, boo, make comment from the audience, or otherwise disrupt the proceedings. I understand there are a lot of passionate people here tonight with an opinion about this, and you're welcome to have that opinion, just be respectful. We start all public hearings with a presentation from staff which you just received, and we typically administer an oath for any participant in a public hearing, staff, applicants, and the public. In this hybrid meeting format, we are administering that oath in a different way. If you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. So first on, the first speaker tonight is Jeff Burge, and behind Jeff is Connie, followed by Terry, and finally Charlie. Please give us your name and your address.
Jeff Burge, 5195 Swadley Street.
Thank you.
Sorry, can you spell your last name, please?
B-U-R-G.
And your address again?
5195 Swadley Street.
Thank you.
So the zoning should not be changed at 52nd and Taft without knowing the details about the project that's going to be built there. Otherwise, the Planning Commission and City Council are just offering a blank TOD check to a developer without public input. To that point, Wheat Ridge City staff should not be working with developer to help them request a zoning change without the developer having to share details of their proposed project with the public. This cuts the public and the City Council out of the project input phase and allows the developer to work behind the scenes directly with city staff through administrative process. This circumvents the intent of the zoning laws and the ability for the public to participate in the development process within their own neighborhoods. The initial public video meeting, which I attended, oh, by the way, there's a mistake. This is not north of 52nd, this is south of 52nd. All the records say that it's north of 52nd. On the initial public video meeting, the developer claimed they didn't have project details to share, but there were at least general ideas because they have checked with utilities in the area to be sure that they can serve their development. A solution to the predicament is just to make sure that the Planning Commission requires some level of project plans before supporting a zoning change. Speaking about the public input concerns, during the public comment sessions for both the City of Wheat Ridge City Plan and the Subarea Plans, the area residents have consistently requested some commercial be included with these large residential developments that are in the area of the RTD G Line. So far, developers have been willing to promise potential for neighborhood commercial, but the projects never do include any commercial, only more high-density residential units. Assuming the City Council is going to steamroll forward with the TOD zoning change anyways, shouldn't we require some level of project review assurances that the developer will actually include some kind of commercial? It's your last big parcel you've got in this area. It has been repeatedly said that retail follows rooftops. We have plenty of rooftops. Where's the retail?
Hello, Connie Burge, B-U-R-G, 5195 Swadley Street. Again, I will reiterate Jeff's point that you need to correct. This property is not located north of 52nd, it's located south of 52nd. At a recent open house that was held at the City of Wheat Ridge's Rex Center for Open House City Plan stuff, I went with a neighbor, and she and I were talking to a planner there, and we expressed our opposition. We talked about this project, and we said we are opposed to the rezoning. And the planner said, well, you know that it's zoned industrial, and if we don't change the zoning, it could be a warehouse. And we were like, we'd rather have a warehouse. And they were just so shocked that we said we'd rather have a warehouse. Well, let me tell you why we'd rather have a warehouse. And it was on the presentation, and it's on page, I believe it was page 10 of the presentation. Let's look at the maximum building height. For the current zoning, 50 feet is all the height that that can have. If we change it, in mixed use, 118 feet, or single use, 90 feet, that's a big difference from 50 feet. And those of us that live in the area would really rather have a 50-foot warehouse than a 120-foot apartment building. Let's talk about setbacks. The existing zoning, front street facing 10 foot, rear setback 15 foot, side setbacks 5 feet. Proposed zoning, front facing, whoo, I'm excited, so give me a break here. Not applicable, not applicable. Those front setbacks don't apply to this zoning. Rear setback 5 feet, side setbacks 0 feet. Okay, there's like no setbacks. My husband, my charming husband and I, last summer, we were walking over to the train station to take the train down to Old Town, Nevada, to have some ice cream. And there was a couple, we were walking on Tabor Street, and there was a couple sitting on the patio of their townhouse right there on Tabor, having a glass of wine. It was their afternoon happy hour, and I felt so bad. We sort of said hello as we walked by, but I felt like I should have introduced myself because we were right in the middle of their happy hour. There's no setbacks. They're right in the middle of the street. Okay, moving on. We know that the developers will tell you they don't know what they're planning, but they have contacted the utilities, and so we know that there's some talk. There's going to be tons of additional cars in the area if they get what they want. I've already contacted the city about traffic mitigation on 52nd east of Tabor. They agree it's a good area for some traffic mitigation, but because of the process that they've switched to, we cannot request traffic mitigation until after the first of the year. If the city already thinks we need traffic mitigation, imagine how much worse it'll be with possibly an additional 200 more cars going through the neighborhood because they go through our neighborhood because they don't want to stop at the traffic signal at Ridge Road and Tabor. You know, many years ago, probably 15 years ago at this point in time, when Wheat Ridge found out they were going to have a transit station, they were so excited for the station because it was going to be the only transit station in Wheat Ridge, and man, they wanted to do something special with that station. We went to meetings, we talked about, they wanted to do something special. Apparently, the only thing Wheat Ridge can think of that's special is townhomes and apartments. The city should withhold approval of the zone change until they can get a developer that submits a plan for something more creative than townhomes and apartment buildings. This remaining open parcel, this is the last open parcel in that space of Wheat Ridge. This is your last chance to do something special. Don't waste it.
Thank you. Next up is Terry Foulke.
My name is Terry Foulke, F-O-U-L-K-E, and I live at 5274 Taft Court. And I want, I agree, I want to go on record agreeing with everything that's been said so far. I have a few more comments to address you as a result of this. I do want to emphasize that everything, I live on the north side of 52nd on Taft Court. What we're looking at is on the south side of Taft Court. I also want to emphasize the fact that the photographs that you saw up there were taken during the time that the apartment building was under construction, so it doesn't really adequately show the area. And certainly were not taken during the time of the parking that's in the area now and how it is totally consumed at this point in time, on-street parking is. My first comment would be that erecting a high-rise building provides very little benefit to the community, absolutely zero. It's the largest building, or would be the largest building there. Eight stories is absolutely ridiculous for that particular area. The tallest we've got is the apartment building at the bottom, and it is five-story. And this thing would make it look like a miniature because as you come back to the north, the elevation rises. So we have townhouses across the street that go, we were told initially that they would only be two stories, and in the 11th hour, they wound up going up to three stories. So we have a, we have a parking, or not only a parking issue, because the, when you take a walk in the area, my wife and I do, and many residents in the area walk on a regular basis down through the RTD area and down and around these buildings. All the parking is totally consumed. The only thing that is left open is the parking that is in the RTD lot. And I'm sure that they don't want residents parking in the RTD lot. The apartment building offers a parking garage that's internally, but they also charge somewhat $60 a month, I think it is, to park in there. Well, if people rent these places, an apartment building, they move in, they pay $1,700, $1,800 a month for an apartment. They have to pay for their animals because everybody has at least one dog, if not a couple. And when it comes around to parking, they're not going to come up, they're not going to be able to come up with another $60. They would rather enjoy life on the outside and park out on the street. They can't go north on Taft Court because we have restricted parking up there. It's by permit only. We went to Jefferson County two years, two, three, almost three years ago and got that adopted, and the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department does enforce that. The condominiums that are north of 52nd Avenue, that are right next door to us, also have the same parking restrictions. So people that bleed out are not going to be able to bleed anywhere. They have to park in and around the apartment complexes or whatever else development that is there. So to assume that there's going to be an eight-story building that's going to provide enough onsite parking inside that building somehow for every resident there, and every resident is going to use that, I mean, that's like blowing smoke because it's not going to happen. It doesn't happen now, and it's not going to happen then. Even though the townhouses have parking in the garage, each unit has a garage for it, but they do not use that. They use that for the storage of their skis and motorcycles and whatever else that they can get in there, but they don't park their cars in there. So it is parked completely full, all the way down Tabor on both sides. 52nd does not have any parking on it, thankfully, at this point in time. Taft Court going south has parking on both sides of the street. You get down to Ridge Road, it has parking on both sides of the streets, all the way to Ward Road, and it is full each and every day and every night. And the ridership for the And the ridership for the, for the train and the buses is not great. I mean, it just isn't there. You know, I'm sorry, maybe it will be in a few years, but it's not there at this point in time. We understand that this property will be developed at some point in time. But you know what? We're asking for a good common sense to be used here. And once it goes out of this committee, it, you know, the door is open. You, you've already allowed the developers and the planning commission and anybody else who, not you, but the planners for the city to, they can develop anything they want to there and eight stories tall. We see now, right now with the development that's there, we see during the winter time, snow and ice that piles up on the street, on 52nd Avenue and also on the street that separates the townhouses and the apartment building. And it's there for months. It gets no sign. And that's exactly what's going to happen in this situation. Only now you're going to push it out on the Ward Road or out onto 52nd Avenue and Taft Court, right there in that corner. We also see now where we have very limited, or very visibility on our, on traffic is very limited in that when you, we get up to the corner at Taft Court and Ridge Road, there are trees put in there. Now, the trees are really nice, but with the trees on that side and the parking to the east, we have to, we have to ease out into that parking lot or out into that intersection almost a quarter of the way out before we can really get a good look as to what's coming, either direction. And the cars are flying down through there. I mean, literally flying down through there. I don't know where the law enforcement is at, but it's not there. It's not there in, inside of Wheat Ridge, on any of those streets. We see no enforcement whatsoever. We don't even see enforcement on 52nd Avenue. And that's kind of a no man's land. I guess, I don't know who handles that. Wheat Ridge, Arvada, or Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, combination of both, I don't know. But there's nothing that goes on there unless they're called into the area. Green space. There's no green space in that area. I mean, if, if we're going to do something that's for the good of the community, let's put in some green space. You know, a park would be great. We've got a lot of kids in the apartment building. Well, maybe not as many in the apartment building as we do in the condos there and also up on the Jolly Rancher side. The only green space we've got right now is about, what is it? Maybe a two or three foot section of grass that's between the sidewalk and the street. It runs down. And by the way, I, I say, thank you for widening and redoing 52nd Avenue. But if you allow something like this to go in, 52nd Avenue, right there at that intersection, it's going to be torn up, you know, as well as I do. When they do construction, they tear into the street, they tear up the concrete, they tear up the asphalt. And it's never replaced like it was when it was put down. So we've got nice sidewalks and everything now, and then it's going to be closed for how many months or years while we construct this monstrous building that's really going to do nothing for us. But we talk about, we want restaurants in the area. We, well, fine, we want restaurants in the area. That'd be all right. The only problem is, is that we do not live in the downtown area of Wheat Ridge or the downtown area of Arvada. There are no restaurants within walking distance. Yeah, there are no restaurants within walking distance in that area. It's all, right now it's, it's residential and we have commercial down there. That commercial isn't going to go anywhere. Japanese Auto Supply, or Auto, which is just down the road from where this proposal was at, is a new building. I don't think Japanese Auto is going to have their building torn down and they acquired the little building, the little white building that's right to the north of that, that this building will basically block its side view. They're not going to move on. And all of the, all the other industrial that I see down in that area is not going to move on, not unless you're ready to offer multi millions of dollars to sell their property and you can get enough of them to put up another huge apartment building. So the problem of it is now, the way that I see it is that if you allow this at this level to go through, you have opened the door that anything that wants to be built down there by anybody who makes any kind of a promise, and it's all smoke because we've seen nothing as far as, as commercial. The old Jolly Rancher area where they're building now, they tout commercial, nothing. The apartments touted commercial, nothing. Not even a coffee shop that's open to the general public. So I don't know, and rooftops? We have to get real about this. We're not, we're not going to have a, a restaurant in that building up on the rooftop. It's not going to happen. So thank you for taking the time to listen to it.
Thank you. Charlie Hood.
Good evening. Charlie Hood, 11843 West 51st Avenue. Yeah, I'm Charlie Hood, speaking in my individual capacity, but I'm a resident of the neighborhood right next door as well as sit on the Metro District Board of Directors for Pan Station. And I come recommending, you know, full support of the project and to the developers hoping for as ambitious of a project as possible. In short, you know, as was in the presentation, RV storage is a very poor land use for, you know, valuable real estate in the area. It's a prime location. There's quick access to the mountains, quick access to downtown. It's a place where more people should live. The location is an incredible amenity and, you know, the residents of the area would like to have additional amenities in the area just through what could be included in the mixed use development. We'd love to have coffee shops, something like that, you know. I, I understand that promises maybe cannot be made at this time, but that's the process. The community would love to have more of a gathering place because right now, you know, it's homes, but not exactly a place to congregate. A transit oriented development kind of hinges on the level of service that the transit can provide. You know, RTD has taken service cuts. We know the G line when it first opened ran at 15 minute headways. Now it's at 30 minute headways. But bringing more people onto that system is the way that we get that to improve. You know, building in, ridership who live at the terminal point there is good for RTD. The G line frankly is the, the shining star of RTD system, best, best train in the, in the network. And I think everyone nearby would love to see that running more frequently just to make our lives easier. I know some of my neighbors here have some hesitations about the uncertainties inherent to the development process. But there's no doubt that this rezoning is important and necessary for the area. It is a process. Not everything can be known upfront. But it would be for the good of the community for this to be put in. So I asked the commissioner tonight, you know, is RV storage really what we want in that prime parcel? At, you know, the, the main transit hub in Wheat Ridge. In the interest of sustainability for the community, you know, putting people next to trains where they can rely less on vehicles, I think supports sustainability initiatives for the city. Dense development is the more sustainable water, energy, all the way across the board, way to go. So I encourage the commission to vote in support of rezoning of this parcel, not just for those who currently live in the area, but for those who we can in the future call our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak that did not sign up? You may come forward if you have any comments you'd like to make. Please state your name, spell your name and give us your address.
My name is Carol Foulke, F O U L K E. My address is 5274 Taft Court in Arvada, of course. We live just north of the rail station. I just wanted to bring some comment because we are down at the rail station often. We walk down in that area. There's much been said about the train and the ridership. And I just feel like it's, I know it's at the end of the line and we've ridden the train and it is handy if you want to get down to a Rockies game or go out to the airport. But in all reality, normally that train runs empty to and from, no matter whether it's 30 minutes or 15 minutes or whatever. Putting large buildings in that area does not necessarily equate to having ridership on the train. And I don't know how many of you read the newspaper anymore, but I think it was really interesting just last week when they were talking about how, how much the ridership is down on the train and how unsafe people are feeling riding the train. So bringing in another huge building, which is absolutely out of character for the neighborhood, just doesn't seem to make sense to me. And so for that reason, I'd say I'm opposed to that. We understand that the, the current usage of the land is not the best usage of the land. And we are not opposed to having some type of development there. It's understandable. You know, the world moves forward. But let's be reasonable about it. Let's think about it if it was in your backyard, if you were dealing with the traffic problems with potential, I mean, the buses run in and out of there all the time, of course. That's their station. They too run empty all of the time. It, it's rare. It's very rare when you have a passenger that boards that area or deboards that area. And I would just invite all of you, come to the area, look around, see what the housing is like, what kind of a community we have there, what we really enjoy there. We have a five story apartment building now, 280 units. I could not even get anyone to tell me what is the occupancy there now. You know, I don't think that that building is anywhere near full. So are we going to put an eight story building there for more housing? When all down Ward Road, they filled up Ward Road with housing. Come look at the Toll Brothers condos there. Look at the, look at how close the sidewalks are. Look at what little green space there is. If you're going to do this, which I have no doubt that that will be redeveloped, do it right. Think about the people that live there and think about, do you want that in your backyard? I mean, I'm not sure where all you live, where all of you live, but I would venture to say it's not along the light rail. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
There are a few people on Zoom. If you would like to speak on this case, please raise your hand. Nobody's raising their hand.
All right. If no one else is, would like to speak, I will now close the citizens forum. And I'll entertain questions from the commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Kearns.
So I've heard, I've heard a lot. And I agree that we need to be creative and make some, there needs to be some, something that's not just an eight story apartment building, but maybe we could talk about requiring some green space. Maybe, I don't, I don't know if we can require ground floor retail, but it sure would be nice to have ground floor retail. It takes rooftops to, to, to support businesses like this. And requiring a developer to lead to include ground floor retail into a development that really isn't on a main street or really doesn't have much sort of main street type frontage, I, I don't know if I can do that. It seems like there could be room to design a building or, or require some sort of green, green space as part of this. However, that's going to probably take away from parking. So we're caught between a little bit of a rock and a hard place here. When I look at this, I see a developer trying to add density to a place that is currently in midst of a housing crisis. We don't have enough housing in this state. And all you have to do is look around at what's happening with prices and what's happening with housing availability and with housing affordability. We are, we are having a problem and many of you are up here, you probably own your homes outright. You know, you, like, put yourselves in the shoes of somebody just graduating college, getting their first job, looking to score an apartment or a condo or buy a, buy a, a unit. I guarantee you, you were probably, when you probably graduated college, you were probably able to buy a unit sooner or later. Kids these days, good luck. Because we don't have enough housing. So to me, I have to, I have to think about adding housing, adding housing diversity. And yeah, these places probably aren't going to be too many too affordable, but we need housing to, to be able to finally get some sort of semblance of affordability in the state. So I, I think I'm, I'm feeling like maybe we can approve this with a caveat for some green space or some sort of, some sort of use in addition to just the, just the residential component. I don't know how that looks though. I'm, I'm interested to hear others' opinions. Thank you.
Can I interject, Commissioner? So of course, when, if the zone change is approved, we'll have open space requirements for the site itself. And Greg, I don't know if you or somebody from your team would like to give a little more detail, but Greg has been working with RTD to potentially utilize the open space to the south of the site with the intention of providing some green space. But I'll let him speak more to that if, if he's comfortable with that or if you'll, if you'll entertain it.
Great. That'd be great. Thank you.
Commissioners, I'd just like to remind you to hold any comments or concerns of an indication of support until later. This time in the meeting is for you to ask questions of the applicant or staff. So Commissioner Quinones?
No questions.
Commissioner Grabey?
Yeah. Has, can I just get confirmation that there, there has not been any commercial development alongside the TOD housing development that's occurred there in the past few years?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Holland?
Can you confirm that if it is residential only, the building height is only six stories or is it still allowable for eight?
That's correct. Any residential, uh, single use, vertically single use, yes.
Single use, commercial or residential?
Correct.
Okay. So if it was residential only six stories?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then were there any other potential zoning codes that it was considered changing to or is TOD mixed use the only non-commercial option?
It would be the only non-commercial option.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
No questions.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And number one, I want to say thank you to all of the citizens that came. And, uh, number one, I want to say thank you to all of the citizens that came down tonight in support or opposition of this. It's very key to have that dialogue for the process to work. So my que, and thank you for the presentation. You're doing well. Um, my first question is, um, is there, in the TOD, Transit Oriented Development Aura, is there a affordable housing requirement?
Uh, we currently do not have any affordable requirements.
Wasn't sure if there was something in that through Jefferson County or what, what?
Foothills.
What's that?
Are you talking, are you thinking of Foothills Regional House?
Yes.
Yeah. No, we don't have any programs running currently.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second question, um, the elephant in the room, is there parking requirements in the mixed-use TOD? And what are those?
Yes, there are. So, um, for residential, it would be, um, one parking space per unit. And then commercial, it depends on, um, the calculation is based on the square foot, the floor area of the commercial area. So it, it would, it would depend, but there's a calculation, um, you know, per, I don't know, I think it's 10,000 square feet, it requires a certain number of parking spaces.
Okay, so, so clear my mind, it's not going to be wall-to-wall building on this parcel? It can't be?
No.
Correct? Okay, thank you. Um, that is all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so we don't know if there's going to be an eight-story building there?
No, not at this time, no. That, that has not been proposed at this time.
So there really hasn't been anything proposed yet? So it's really just trading, uh, the 50-foot maximum for the 80-foot maximum, is that?
My planning manager just, uh, recommended mentioning it would, it would be six stories or 80. The, the footage and the number of stories, it's, whichever is less, whichever is the shorter height. So just to clarify that. But yes, I guess if it, if the zone change were to be approved, then those new heights would apply to the zone change.
Okay, that, that's it.
So my question, um, is for the applicant. So you are requesting this zone change for a probable, uh, development, but your plans for this development have not been finalized, is that correct?
Good evening. My name's Celeste Tanner. Uh, address is 6985 West 26th Avenue.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Sorry, Celeste Tanner, C-E-L-E-S-T-E-T-A-N-N-E-R. 6985 West 26th Avenue. Thank you. Thank you. To answer your question, no, we do not have a solid plan yet. Uh, we've been engaged in the process, which is the first step in the process with the zone change. Then we can step into the site development plan process, which again would still be available, you know, and accessible to the public and would be excited to work with the public in that. Um, I, I did just want to make a quick introduction, if I could, about who we are and, and what we do. So I said, my name's Celeste Tanner. I'm the Chief Development Officer and President at Confluent Development. Confluent is a Denver-based developer. We, we are all in the metro area. I'm actually a resident of Wheat Ridge. I've lived here 11 years. I'm just a stone's throw away, actually, um, and have a very vested interest personally in the vibrancy and success of, of Wheat Ridge in the long run. You know, Confluent has developed in the city over the years. We were behind Kipling Village and the Sprouts Center there. We also developed the Morning Star Senior Living Community in the area as well. And we're very excited when the opportunity came to add to the TOD area and, and the vibrancy that is, that is in process and, and happening there. I, I do want to say I appreciate all the comments that are here tonight. You know, what I have been really excited about in this particular parcel is we, we develop all over the country. And normally when we do that, we, we see a plan, we see an opportunity and we see a city and then we have to go out and, and we do all the legwork to find out what the community wants. And the city here has actually, I think, been very proactive and engaging in neighborhood surveys and studies and providing us with all of that information. And that's very important in informing our process going forward. Personally, for me and for us as a business plan, we believe that you need to create a "there," there, that, that's going to be integral to the success of any future development in this project. And we understand what's important to the residents that are currently there. We've seen it in the reports. Um, and frankly, it's the thesis behind what we plan to organize. We're very early in those stages. It will require a lot of input. Uh, we mentioned conversations with RTD, but obviously all the other agencies that are there. And we'll work in lockstep with staff to be able to make sure that we can pull together a vibrant development in the next stage in the process.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I have no further questions.
I, I have one follow-up.
Yes, sure.
You mentioned briefly that the next stage of the process, site plan, development plan, will continue to have an opportunity for public input?
That they'll be available to the public. I believe the city has, uh, those plans published, has a website, correct?
Yes, all land use applications are public record. So there isn't an actual public process, um, for that portion, but if somebody called and wanted to see the plans that we were reviewing, we would be able to provide those to them.
And I'll just offer now, for the record, I'm available and I'm literally in the neighborhood. I'm always happy to engage if there are any questions by members of the community and we're happy to provide, you know, I can sit and provide an update along the way.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So mentioned was green space between the development on the south side and the RTD park and ride. Can you expand on that? Have you talked with RTD? Is, is that RTD land or what would, what's envisioned or what's the thought for that?
Yeah, and so again, nothing that we can commit to at this time, but we do see, you know, the, the start of a small park space and then a walking trail. And there's just a natural continuation of that. And I think an opportunity to create some additional activation. There is RTD-owned property that's not currently improved, uh, by RTD. So, you know, with, with help of city staff, we've started just some initial conversations to see if there's any opportunity to, to maybe improve upon that and add an amenity that would be accessible for the broader community. But again, very early, not sure, and obviously requires a lot of work with an outside agency.
If it came down to it, I don't think RTD has the funding to build that trail. Would, would you entertain building the trail to connect between Taft Court, the RTD park and ride, your development and what looks like a trail on the west side?
Yeah, bless you. Uh, first step in the process is actually just getting the permission. Um, and as part of that, RTD will state what their conditions are and, and what we're able to do. But yes, ultimately our goal is that, you know, ideally that would be improved in some way. And I'm sure there would be some participation in that that we would need to resolve.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Quinn?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. And, um, I just want to clarify what, uh, one of my fellow commissioners had asked. The only, this is the only other option for a zoning change, correct? It's either going to stay what it is or it's going to be multi-use TOD?
Correct.
So it's either A or B right now. So either industrial, whatever it is, and nothing's going to happen, or this, these, there's no other option, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Quinones?
So how many units would we be considering in this development if we were to just go residential only?
Well, if it were residential only, it'd be subject to the six-story height limitation. Um, so, I mean, it would be based on that programming. To, to be honest, we have not finalized anything in any one direction, um, and that hasn't been our starting place. So I, I can't give you a precise unit count. But it would be subject to all the existing requirements in the code. We wouldn't be asking for any variances.
Oh, from the zoning side of things, um, as I previously mentioned, this particular property is exempt from the density limitation. Um, typically, most properties are limited to 21 dwelling units per acre, but this one was voted upon. Um, it's an urban renewal area in the TOD area. So it, um, of course, as Celeste mentioned, um, it'd be, um, limited to whatever they could fit in a certain size building, but in theory...
Exactly. It's like I imagine that we do have a calculation that we can make according to the square footage and the step-by-step and everything else.
Correct.
I was just curious if we had gotten to that number to give an overall idea of how many residents were looking plus traffic in the area.
I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I, I will share though, I mean, as part of the next stage in the process, we will do a traffic study, right? We just need to be able to refine the plan and, and that will identify the impacts based on program.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gravy?
Yeah, one more follow-up, um, for staff, actually, and it's related to a question that Commissioner Quinn had. Do you know, is there any potential that the existing parking requirements that you had mentioned that are in place, um, are impacted by any recent changes in state law that have to do with minimum parking requirements?
Um, no, not at this time.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
One more question for staff.
Yes, sir.
Since this is adjacent to a TOD, does the developer get to forego some parking requirements because it's so transit-oriented?
No.
No, they still have to build normal parking requirements?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Holland?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Um, is there a formula for the ideal TOD density? And where are we today? Like, where would we see ridership being at a level where it's appropriate? Doesn't sound like we have answered that.
I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that. I, I'm not sure.
Suffice to say, it's not there today, given the testimony of the residents and the lack of use.
Yeah, I'm also not qualified to answer that type of question. Definitely, you know, I mean, there is some, some legislation around, um, and I'm going to probably mess this up, but there's some legislation, and I don't know where it's at in the process, perhaps one of you do, but it is pertaining to transit-oriented communities. And the zoning, the state is looking to require that the zoning near and around those is at a minimum density. But again, right now, our code as a home real city prevails, so.
Thank you.
I do not see any of my fellow Commissioners wanting to ask any more questions, so I will now close the public hearing. And I am ready to, um, entertain a motion. Is there any discussion about the motion? Okay, excuse me. I have been corrected. Is there someone who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Moore?
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-24-06, a request for approval of a zone change from industrial employment, i.e. to mixed-use commercial TOD, MUC TOD, for property located at 11910 West 52nd Avenue for the following reasons. Excuse me, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect of the surrounding area. Utility infrastructure adequately services the property. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the, of the city's adopted plans and policies. The zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. The zone change will further enable the goals for the TOD area to be met. The criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports the request.
May I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
And now we have, um, we are open for discussion on the motion and the second. Do I have any comments from my fellow Commissioners on how you will be voting? Commissioner Gravy?
Yeah, um, so I was able to visit the site this morning and I do have some familiarity with the area. I ran a small commercial vegetable operation west of Ward on 52nd for a few years and, um, you know, understand that there's been a dramatic change to certain, uh, parts of, of town and in particular that area, which, you know, historically is even more dramatic based on kind of what's, uh, the type of development that's happened over a long, you know, period of time. Unfortunately, that, it, it, the, you know, that in itself is what has contributed to, um, a housing scarcity issue that we do face. I think the challenge we're at here is you've got a, um, valid initiative that was put in front of the voters to exempt heightened density restrictions in this area, which is, um, you know, pretty strong in terms of a process. And you've also got, um, as was alluded to, you have changes in state law that have to do with density around transit, um, as, you know, an approach to resolving an affordability crisis. And the challenge is, is, you know, that cannot, that in itself isn't something that not everybody carries the burden of in terms of the difficulty with having a different type of development in proximity to your home. So, you know, I sympathize with the folks who live around there. But it's hard to, um, you know, do any, it's, it's, you know, you're, we're a little beyond certain parts of the process. Now, I, I will say that, um, to me, it, it does seem a little shocking that there's not any commercial in the area. I mean, you, you look at the, um, page five of our packet that talks about the comprehensive plan and the very first two bullet points emphasize mix of uses and should include commercial. And so to me, the fact that there hasn't been any commercial, um, included in the development that's already occurred, and it's a lot of development relative to what, you know, is there. I mean, that was very surprising to me. And even this morning when I was driving around, I mean, I, it really was unusual, I felt, to see that type of development and not have any commercial included because frankly, that does, um, conflict with the pedestrian-friendly quality and really the sense of community. Because you can't have places that people interact with each other if there's no retail or commercial places to go. And so, you know, I, I, I understand that, you know, we emphasize those types of uses on commercial corridors, um, which is kind of an easy way to do it. But I also think there's an argument for when you have this level of residential density to include them as well, um, for the reasons I just stated. I, I don't, uh, I don't think I'm comfortable with making a, you know, commercial space to be included as a condition because I don't know if that's appropriate in this phase. And I don't think we have the, uh, I don't, I don't think we're able to do that, I don't think we have the authority to do that. Um, but I, I will say that I do think that that, um, should be included in development when you have that many, um, units. And so, you know, um, that, that being said, when you zoom out and you think of the issue in general, I mean, um, you know, Wheat Ridge didn't build apartments for 40 years. And so, you know, we are a case study in why housing has skyrocketed. So, um, for those reasons, I'm going to be in support of this development today, but I, I did want to express, you know, my familiarity with the area and my opinions on that lack of commercial. And I, and I do want to thank the folks who came out too. I, you know, I think it's really important for the public to inform this process and I hope that you'll continue to do so and also that you'll, um, participate in the comprehensive plan, that's the city plan that's happening now and other parts of the, the city that where we need public input. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment on how you view this? Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, like Commissioner Gravy said, thank you to the public for participating in this. Not only Wheat Ridge speaks here and on the Zoom. And my thought train just derailed, and there was probably no survivors. The, in front of us, this is like a chicken before the egg, right? So the developers can't give a solid plan until the zoning is changed and the zoning, people are hesitant to give the zoning change until they see a development plan. I think we have to, I mean, it's either gonna be this industrial RV parking place or we give the opportunity for development to come in and submit the plan to the city, provided city council approves all of this, because that's the next step. The city council, we have to go through the same process with council. So there's opportunity for more public input and more opportunity for discussion there. And so, with that being said, I just encourage the city to hear what, the way we heard tonight, we want more retail and our applicant has heard that. And so, you have to take a little leap of faith with some of this stuff. And so, thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Zoning is a process. And as a practical matter, applicants have to talk to utilities. The planning department has to confer with utilities to see if they can even serve the area. So yes, you're right. They have talked to those people. That's part of the process. And it is kind of scary for me as a commissioner to vote on something that I don't know what it's gonna be. I have voted on a lot of things from this dais before that never came to pass, that we were told was gonna happen. And for whatever reason, life happens, and the project is either stalled or has not happened yet. So planning is a tricky thing. Zoning is a tricky thing. But you have to have the process. And you folks who came out tonight and gave up the nice relaxation of being in your home to be part of this process, we thank you for that. We understand your concern. It's very scary. But unfortunately, for those of you who would like that area to stay open and have your nice, you live in a big city now. We're 20,000 units behind in housing in Jefferson County. The apartment building was full last summer. I took a tour of it. And the people who built that said it was the very first development that they had that filled up immediately in the whole country. So I don't think they would have lied to us about that. That apartment building is full. That part, and as Commissioner Gravy told you, Wheat Ridge hasn't built an apartment building in 40 years until the ones on 38th and the ones on Wadsworth at 38th. We're way, way, way behind in having housing and rooftops and people to fill commercial spaces. The developers here, they've heard your comments. They're a good developer. They do a quality product. I urge them, and that's all I can do, because all I can do is vote on the zone change at this point to consider putting in a restaurant or a coffee shop. Now, that being said, there's a lot of empty commercial spaces in Wheat Ridge right now that aren't filling up with restaurants and coffee shops, because the economy right now is really hard for that type of business. So part of it is lack of labor force. And so, a lot of the things that we want, we may not get to have. But we do need to have housing in this city. And for that reason, and I, I understand that you don't know what's gonna happen there. We don't know what's gonna happen there. But the zone change has to happen before a developer can say, all right, let's hire the architect. Let's build the plan. Let's design it. Let's talk, let's get maybe a coffee shop. It has to be permission, as Ms. Tanner said. We have to get permission first, and that's, this is the first part of that process. I know that's not what you want to hear, but that's kind of how it happens. And you have the second part of the process, which is to go before city council and plead your case then. And I'm very sorry you're not gonna like my answer, but I am gonna vote in support of this project. All right, commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, seven to one.
And thank you to everyone, the applicant and the audience who came out and spoke tonight. We appreciate your participation. All right, next on our agenda, is there any old business to discuss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no old business.
All right, is there any new business?
Yes. First of all, upcoming dates. Your next meeting is scheduled on holiday, so July 4th, you will not have a meeting. But you will have a meeting on July 18th, and you'll have, I'm anticipating two minor code amendments. And we're also going to have the city plan consultant back and have some updates on the city plan and the process and have some more discussion around that. So hopefully you can attend on July 18th. I know we had some people chatting, so I wanted to make sure you heard that date again. And then, following that, our next meeting dates are August 1st and August 15th, and I don't know if we'll have anything on those yet. So more to come. I do not have any project or development updates, per se, but I do have an update. I wanted to talk a little bit about, if, thank you to those of you who were able to make it out to the City Plan Open House Number Two last week. We did have at least as many people in attendance and new people, not the same people who came to the first meeting, which was over, well, we're guessing probably around 140 people. So that was really good. A lot of people came in and said that it was, they found out about it via word of mouth. So thank you for getting, you know, getting out there and promoting the city plan and the participation in it. One of the boards, if you were there, you will notice one of the stations had about five boards on the Lutheran Legacy Campus and what's gonna happen when the hospital moves. Hospital is moving in August to the new site. They are planning basically a mass exodus on a Saturday. See, I won't avoid that area when I know the date certain. I can let you know early August. And so, once they move, the hospital, the intent of the hospital is to sell the property. They have hired CBRE to represent them, and they are in the process of obtaining requests, basically letters of interest. One of the things that we've been talking about internally is, as we've done with a couple of other sites, particularly a portion of Wadsworth and then a portion along 38th, is doing a city-initiated rezoning for the property and rezoning it to a new mixed-use zone that would cater itself and be complimentary and support the Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan, which was adopted in October of 2021. And so, the first thing that we need, we would need to do is get a zoning code in place and then rezone it. The city-initiated rezoning is legislative, which means you are not restricted about talking about it with others. There are several advantages to having a city-initiated rezoning. If you think about, the site is 100 acres approximately, which is about the same size as Clear Creek Crossing, where the new hospital is. Took years, decade or more to get the zoning in place on that property, and it ended up going through a planned development. Very cumbersome. We didn't have, in that case, a master plan to go off of, so we had no, no direction. In this case, we do have a master plan. It's adopted, and it gives parameters for things like having lower density around the perimeter in exchange for taller buildings in the center of the campus. The existing hospital building, the highest point on that building or the, one of the buildings, the highest building in there is 91 feet. So to give you some relationship, the, not the Ives, the parallel apartments are 64 feet tall. They're five stories, 64 feet. Generally, you think about 12 feet per story, roughly. Hospitals tend to be a little bit taller, because they've got a lot of HVAC equipment in between the floors. So the hospital, even though it isn't an eight-story building, it is 91 feet, or six-story building, it is 91 feet. The, in getting the zoning in place ahead of the game, basically, it does a couple of things. First, it helps the hospital to sell the property, which they will need to do. If that land sits, I'm losing my voice. If that land sits vacant, it will likely be vandalized, be a hub for crime. Vacant properties never age well, I should say. And so, it's important to get the redevelopment on it started sooner than later. And the city advancing the zoning on it will help in a couple of different ways. First of all, the timing. Second of all, they'll be able to get it sold, because, you know, when something's rezoned, it's more valuable typically. Right now, it's zoned Planned Hospital District, which only allows hospitals and related uses. And we're not gonna have another hospital there, so it has to be rezoned. As part of that rezoning, it's also, you'll maybe remember, we had the discussion, Steve Art came in, and we, he brought the urban renewal area plan for that area in. And while that hasn't been fully solidified, because we're kind of waiting to see what happens on the sale and other things, that will be an urban renewal area. And in some of the urban renewal areas, that height restriction, sometimes heightened density. In this case, we'd only be talking about the height restriction being lifted, because if it was rezoned, the tallest the buildings could be would be 35 feet for residential and 50 feet for non-residential. And so, when you, when you start to look at the price and the need for housing, and I appreciate you all commenting on, we do need more housing. I'm old school, I'm kind of odd for a planner, because I, I like sprawling open spaces, too. I mean, I think that, you know, we have to have balance, though. And being in the center of the city, the Lutheran site is going to be an opportunity to have a wonderful development. But in order to achieve those lower densities around the edges that the neighbors want, we need to be able to allow higher density in the middle for the developer to have it pencil out. And so, the third piece of this is a charter amendment that is going to be put on the ballot. We're at least expecting it to be put on the ballot in November. And that will be, I think the language has to be prepped and ready by September. So a couple of months leeway, leadway. We, we are, at this point, not 100% what that height will be, but it will probably be in line with the mixed-use regulations that we have now somewhere in that vicinity. But if you think about the pork chop, the higher densities are proposed, or the higher heights and densities, which could still only go up to 21 dwelling units per acre, which is under the charter, we're not asking for, we would not be asking for an increase in the density. Excuse me. Because the density is spread across the entire site. So while the center may have greater density, we wouldn't need a change in the density. But we would need to allow a higher height. So I'm putting that out there. Excuse me. I had a cold a month ago, and it's still lingering. Putting that out there and then seeing if you have any questions about the, the zone change, the zoning code amendment, the zone change, or the ballot question. And if you want to, I'm happy to discuss that as much as I can.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if everybody got this, but they sent around a survey or a poll asking if it was put on the ballot, would you be in support of amending the charter to allow for that? And it said in that that the new building would not be any taller than the hospital. But from what you just said, it sounds like it could be.
Uh-uh, no. We wouldn't be proposing anything over 90 feet.
Okay.
Because I had the same question. Okay, hold on. Probably because in the mixed-use, you can go up to 118 for non-residential. But we wouldn't be proposing, and I should have said that, we wouldn't be proposing anything taller than the existing hospital. So probably 90 feet. And that would also allow the houses around the perimeter. What we'd also be saying is the houses around the perimeter couldn't be more than two and a half stories. So, and we'd like to maybe put some form, some design standards in there as well, including like pitched roofs instead of flat roofs. Something that is more, we want the neighborhoods around there to know that we've been listening. We really are listening. But there's trade-offs, right? So the height has to go somewhere. The higher density has to go somewhere. And that would be in the center.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead. The house and the church and some other building, are we, are we making sure that that's pretty important to everybody in the city, pretty much?
Yeah, great question. And I should have also addressed that, I'm having a coughing fit. Yeah, part of, part of the advantage of the city rezoning is we would have a little bit more control over, we, you know, they're, the buildings are not historically designated. However, they're important to the community. And so, the hospital's still the owner of the property. If you, if they were to be designated, I believe a few years ago, somebody told me that the Blue House, they tried to get it on the state or national register, and it wasn't, it didn't qualify. It may qualify for a local register, but there again, it, it, it might limit what you could do with it. I understand at one point, and I kind of remember this, back in the 80s, it was a tea, tea house? Okay. And now it's sitting vacant, and apparently it's in pretty bad disrepair, especially on the inside. I haven't been in it, but I've heard from those who have been. It would be lovely if we could, as strongly as possible, encourage, and we'd have to, we're gonna talk more with council, too, about what we can and cannot do. But at least strongly, strongly encourage the Blue House and the chapel to be incorporated into the site. There's a good chance that some of the buildings could be repurposed. Some of the hospital buildings, a newer tower and that sort of thing. And then also the trail along the Rocky Mountain Ditch. That's another thing. Of course, it's gotta be in concert with communications with the ditch, and sometimes certain ditch companies are easier to work with than others. So I couldn't, you know, we couldn't make any promises about whether the ditch would stay open and things like that. That's a communication that we have to have with the ditch company. But I understand that they have so far, I think that they're, they're more cooperative than some of the ditch companies that I've worked with in the past. Anyway, so there are certain things, though, that we could do to leverage those existing assets by also being a little bit more in control of the zoning. The next step that would happen if it were rezoned and the height was, the charter was amended to allow a taller height in the center of the site. They, the applicant, developer applicant, whoever went under- They, the, the applicant, developer applicant, whoever went under contract, for example, on the property, would have to come in for a concept plan. And there is some neighborhood outreach and noticing around that. It's not a public hearing type of process, but it's more of a, more of a fact-finding and making sure that they're very transparent. But the, the, the good thing would be, the concept plan would have to be in line with the zoning. The zoning would need to be in line with the master plan. So, there would be some, some, what's the word I'm looking for? There, we would know basically what you could and could not do there. A developer would know what they could and could not do there. And we wouldn't be sitting it out for, you know, years or longer, waiting for a developer to come in and rezone it or risk it not being sold and sitting vacant and potentially vandalized or worse, so. Anyway.
Quick question.
Sure.
We worked on a Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan a few years ago. I don't know if we ever picked a preferred alternative. If we're putting zoning into, if the zoning has to follow the master plan, how do we, I, I mean, did the master plan ever pick a, did we ever choose? I don't remember if we did.
Yeah, there's.
Or was it a couple of concepts?
Yeah, it's pretty clear about having lower density around the perimeter, higher density in the middle. It talks a little bit about possible uses. We are going to be going to council in July, I want to say, yeah, July 15th, I think, to talk a little bit more about what the zoning might entail because we would probably create a new mixed-use zoning called Mixed Use Lutheran Legacy Campus LLC, something like that, something, you know, easy to remember. But they would, it would really just be based on what the expectations were from that master plan. And that's where, again, we would have, I mean, even if a developer came in, we'd point them to the master plan, but I think just the, the speed of getting it to a place where there's some predictability for a developer would help, rather than waiting it out like we did on Clear Creek Crossing and it taking a decade or more. So, it'll be brought before, you know, before you all too, as any zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 26 would be.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that was my question, so just in terms of the process for, yes, sorry. So, just in terms of the process for that new zoning, it would be approved by council? Or what would be our, would we have a role?
Yeah.
And like, how would that, because I mean, I imagine that, you know, while there was public engagement in the master plan, there would obviously be the opportunity for public engagement in this new zoning and it would probably be more impactful for the, you know.
Yeah, it would, it would still be a public hearing. It would come to you all first and then it would go to first and second reading because it's an ordinance and has two readings before council. But again, the, the first, the first thing that we would need to do is look, is, is develop the mixed-use LLC zoning. We're kind of, we've got some tentative ballpark kind of dates that we're thinking probably on the zoning code amendment, you might be seeing that in December-ish timeframe. And then the city-initiated zone change would follow that, so it'd probably be early next year.
Yeah, because obviously, the, the, what that would look like would depend on the outcome of that charter vote.
It, it will, yep.
And then, I just had another quick question, just because I don't have familiarity with, I don't think anybody in Wheat Ridge does, with the scale of property. So, it's going to be sold just as 100 acres to somebody and then just kind of high level? Is it likely to not be partitioned in any way? I mean, I know you don't, we don't know the future, but I mean, is it likely just to be kind of developed in one kind of determination?
I think it'll get phased, just like Clear Creek Crossing did. So, probably what would happen would be, you'd have a, a concept plan that basically lays out, here's what we expect to see in this area. The mixed-use zoning would, would guide that. Here's what we expect to see in this area. So, if there were a, let's say that there was some commercial, maybe you have like a little main street that goes in and there's some commercial that we're looking for from the concept plan, I'm making stuff up, I'm designing it in my head. But let's say that we said, okay, there's going to be a main street and some commercial and that's what we want in this area. The master developer would then have a, basically a sub-developer that would come in and develop that commercial piece if they were not commercial developers. Similarly, if they were a commercial, primarily commercial developer, they could sell, you know, a piece of the property to a residential developer. So, I could, I could see it getting phased out. I mean, it would probably take many, many years to get developed out, even after, even assuming that all the stars align and the zoning, the, the, is, is approved and the charter cap is removed for the height or, you know, capped it at a taller height, it would, it's still going to take many, many years to develop out. There's infrastructure. We were thinking today, the, we were, we had a meeting with the planners, we were brainstorming some of this stuff and, you know, if you think about how many cars are in that parking lot and, because we were thinking, what, what, what would the impact be? You know, we don't, we don't have a traffic study, I mean, we're just, we're planners, right? We plan things. But you think about how many cars are already on that site, you know, would there be a big difference if it was higher density residential in the middle? Maybe not. So, anyway, just kind of a brainstorm session and it, it's fun, you know, it's, I think it's, it's what we went to school for. We like, we like planning things out, we don't get a chance to do it very often, but it's, it's kind of fun, so.
Yeah, I just had one last question and, we've got a site this big, I mean, are you already exploring the infrastructure that, you know, I mean, I, I know that the site itself, but coming out sewer mains and this kind of stuff, like, do you think the development will impact, will require kind of construction, so to speak?
Like?
A ways outside from it, like?
You mean like up, upsized sewer lines, for example?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I really don't know. That would have to be studied and the developer would, would be the ones looking at that once the site was sold.
Thanks for the information.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's very, it's very interesting and I'll continue to keep you kind of updated on what's going on, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, especially for those of you who may not have seen the boards. But we've had, we started talking about the Lutheran campus in April at the first open house and we've also had a couple of study sessions with council. And then, of course, on June 6th, we, we had the boards, we had more boards at the second open house for the city plan. So, and there, there would be, you know, neighborhood meetings and everything required by a rezoning, it's just a, when it's city-initiated, it's a legislative rezoning as opposed to a private rezoning, which is quasi-judicial. So, you do have a little bit more flexibility to talk to people about it, so.
Has there been any discussion about having any special financing designation for that area to encourage certain types of development?
Yeah, being that it will be in an urban renewal area, there will be some opportunities for, like, tiff. Beyond that, I don't know, it's beyond my knowledge bank, but.
Anything else? Do we have any commissioner updates?
So, Stat Repair Center on 29th, everyone in the neighborhood called Waltz, was sold about a year ago. And he sold it and the people that bought it have plans and they've been working on it to turn it into a bar lounge with a motor theme, I think is what they're using on it. So, one of the difficulties became, they have to go for their liquor license. So, last month, they came to the liquor control board, which I think just consisted of two guys, it was just two guys there, so, I don't know. So anyways, they looked at the crowd that was coming in and their eyes got very big and they got real nervous and the first thing they did was kick it to this month. They, they just moved the agenda item to today at 1 o'clock. So, I was expecting to be the same two guys up there and they'd come in and it wasn't. They had a hearing officer to hear about hearing. The establishment was represented by their attorney and the city had an attorney there who I didn't recognize, it wasn't the city attorney that we had come. So, they went through the process, they had the person, they had the company there that did the survey of the neighborhood. So, apparently it's a third party and their, their job is to go out and help businesses get liquor permits. And so, they, they go door to door and ask people, are you in favor of this or not? The problem is with that is, the company, when they did that, they're reporting that, you know, 80% of the people were in favor of it. But then upon questioning, turns out that was 80% of the people they talked to. And so, if they didn't talk that hard to anybody, then, you know, that's the way it works and people don't answer their doors when someone knocks, so that's not surprising. They also did, they were big on this half-mile radius, had to be within a half-mile, but when they did the businesses, they went beyond the half-mile, they went into Denver to ask businesses if they were in favor or not. So, I don't know where that went. So, the whole thing got kind of, kind of crazy. So, she also had, the hearing officer also had people come up and basically say if they wanted to sign up to talk and then also if they, you could sign up to ask questions of the witnesses. You could do one or both. So, I, they went through the whole process and stuff and people came up and did their comments. And at the end of the whole thing, she made her decision. She said it'll be a written one following, but she did a verbal decision right there and, and denied it and denied the liquor permit. But with a caveat, she said, you can apply again and maybe you can do some community outreach and maybe you can look at your hours of operation and then come back. So, that's basically where it lays right now.
I got a quick comment. Just want to encourage folks to come out to Ridge Fest, June 29th. It's going to be the Anderson Park this year because the green is obviously under construction where Local Works has put the festival on in the past. It's a, it's a really cool festival, it's got a makers theme, so there's a lot of kind of DIY folks who promote their goods there. There's a, a great, usually great live music. There's going to be a cornhole tournament, which I'm going to be running for Local Works. It's going to be a $500 prize and then also a second place prize, more or less, connect two groupings but of some custom cornhole boards, so it's going to be a good time, 2 to 8 p.m., Anderson Park on the 29th. I encourage you to come, come by and since you're also civic-minded and anybody listening, Local Works is still looking for a few more volunteers, so reach out to Local Works if you're interested in doing that.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity last week, which is why I wasn't at the, the June 6th event, to attend the All-American City, I'll just, let me start over. I was able to go to this event through the city council and, and the mayor was there and a few others. When the city, we were awarded a All-American City Hall of Fame, and this is by the National Civic Committee, the Lifetime Achievement Award, the city did, and for things that they have been doing. And I, I didn't realize how big of a deal it really was when, when you, when I got there. There were cities represented from all across the country, probably 12 to 18 different cities. They brought the outfit from Texas, bought, brought like 40 people, I think most of them were the high school marching band and came in and played and, and they're part of the opening ceremonies. And we, as, you know, the city, we did a little skit, kind of talking about where, where we are today and, and the things that we've done through, Let's Talk and Wheat Ridge Speaks and things of that nature. And it's quite the honor to, to get that award. And so, I, I just thought everyone should know, it was pretty cool, we are, got the Lifetime Achievement Award. So, anyhow, that and a couple other things, the ballots have been mailed out for primaries, so civic duty, do your part, check the box, send it in, got a ballot box right here, mail it, whatever you got to do. And thanks again to all the public's input on this, what we had going on tonight. It's a little rough sometimes, but if, if we don't have that civic engagement, we won't win another lifetime award, right? And I appreciate everybody coming in, sometimes it's uncomfortable and, you know, but it is the process, as Chairman Disney said. So, once again, thanks to everyone's participation.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second.
Commissioners, please vote. Motion approved, 8 to 0.